I think Paul, the chair today.
That would be real interesting.
Where is the land institute land? Is it all over here?
Welcome to July 23rd, 2024 Planning and zoning meeting. We'll get started this evening. We need to agree to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes from July 23rd, 2024.
Chairman, Vice Chairman. I move to approve the agenda for this evening, July 23rd, 2024.
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. The approval of the minutes from July 25th.
June 25th.
June 25th, excuse me, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from the June 25th, 2024 meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. We do have Paul still online, don't we?
Yeah.
Aye.
Speak up, Paul. Thank you.
I had to unmute myself, guys.
Alright, so the first item on the agenda is conditional use permit 24-01, a request from Gary Johnson. I'll let staff take it from here.
Okay, this is a request to allow for a modification of the hours of operation for the excavation of product to meet the increased peak demand needs for the area. The increased hours would be for the months of August and September of this year, 2024, and April through September going forward, beginning in 2025. The applicant has stated that currently enforced hours are causing issues with meeting increased customer demand and product during the five-month period stated above, and thus affecting their ability to remain competitive in the area. Currently enforced hours are 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to noon on Saturdays, with dredging from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. Monday through Friday, and noon to 4:00 on Saturdays with no truck traffic during dredging hours only. You'll have to, I've attached to your staff report the approval letter dated August 10th, 2015, that outlines those requirements under item 16 of the conditions. The applicant is proposing operating from 7:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. Monday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Sunday for the five-month demand for product when it's the highest. Staff is recommending approval of a modification of hours, however, due to the proximity of the business to residential uses and to limit any adverse impacts, staff would recommend the following hours of operation: 7:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Monday through Friday with dredging only from 6:30 to 8:00. 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Saturdays with dredging from 4:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. 11:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. on Sundays with dredging from 2:30 to 4:00. Please note that all other conditions originally approved under that conditional use permit 1501 will remain unchanged and in force. The commission options would be to either approve the requested hours of operation as submitted by the applicant, approve the requested modification as recommended by staff, approve the request with any modification in hours deemed appropriate to the commission, or make no changes to the current hours of operation as approved under CUP 15101. And the applicant is here if you would like to have him speak.
Okay, let's start with the applicant, please.
Get in.
My name's Chris Johnson. I own Johnson Sand, and as Mr. Hamilton said, I'm requesting additional hours just because with the demand at Salina, Sling County, and just the use of sand in a lot of different applications, you know, we've noticed that just the original hours that were placed on us, we just, the demand is just greater than what we can produce, you know, at a reasonable cost to the consumer. You know, I originally proposed longer hours than what the what the planning or what Mr. Hamilton was stating, and, you know, just based on the runs, the tons per hour that we can produce. You know, basically, that's what it amounts to, is that, you know, on a plant basis, your production, you know, it's usually a tons per hour, how much sand you can produce an hour, you know. And though, and to give you an example, Sling County right now, year-to-date, we had the Sling County bid last year, and in July of last year, they purchased about 6,000 ton last year by July. This year, by June, they've already purchased 17,000 ton. So, as you can tell, you know, just Sling County Road and Bridge, they've already surpassed, they're over 300% of purchase, you know, and we're already, we're half the year is not even, I mean, we're, and we still got five months to go. And so, and that's just for Sling County, you know, Road and Bridge. And so, and so you can imagine if they're like that, everything else, every, you know, Sling County Concrete or APAC, everybody else is seeing that same increase in demand. And so, it's not like I can have a dial that I can just turn up my machines and just, you know, wish that I could, you know, I wish I could produce 1,000 ton an hour, you know, or, but your machine can only run so fast before it meets its capacity. And so, with the limited hours that, you know, I was able to run, you know, you can only, at some point, you're at max capacity and you're selling sand that, you're basically selling the sand the day, producing sand, and then that pile's gone the next day. So, and a lot of times, it's, you know, sometimes you're selling the same sand you're pumping that day, it's just, you're darn, darn near, you know, at that mass capacity. And so, you know, and, and, you know, just because I'm asking for these hours doesn't necessarily mean that I'm going to be running these hours. It's kind of like, you know, the analogy, I'd rather have it and not need it than need it and not have it type of mentality, you know, because I would much rather not, for me as a business, I would much rather not pay the overtime or not, you know, because if I'm running extra hours, that means I'm spending more money on energy, spending more money on labor, you know, my margins go down, you know, so if I have to run these extra hours, it's just to meet that need, you know, it's more of a consumer benefit than it is me, because my margins actually go down if I run extra hours. But, you know, I, right now, like I said, you know, with the landfill sale going on, that's been a big, you know, a big project that I'm producing sand for. And so, there's a lot of, a lot of sand, you know, that is being sold. So, I guess that's what I have right now. I mean, I, I understand, I mean, the original hours, that's what I would like, and I know they propose a little reduced hours than what I would prefer, but, I mean, I, you know, I, I think, you know, as far as the tons per hour, you know, not to sound greedy, but I would, me personally, whether you approve it or not, I would prefer my original request, you know, versus what the county's recommending, just because, you know, I know 8:30 sounds, you know, long, you know, late, but, you know, I would, as far as the backup alarms and the sound and everything, you know, I would, I would be very diligent in making sure that, you know, I'm reducing the amount of sound that comes from that plant. I know the backup alarms, you know, the pitch of the noise has a lot to do with it, you know, as far as, I know my diesel motors, you know, they produce more of a baritone noise, and I'm sure you can hear it, but, you know, the backup alarms have a higher pitched noise, and you can actually hear those more, you can, my diesel motors, when they go, you know, when I'm backing up a heavy piece of equipment. And so, you know, I would make sure that, you know, I'm not running, it would just be production. It wouldn't be not, not open to the public. I'm not moving material around. I'm basically just pumping sand. You know, there wouldn't be any mobile equipment moving around with backup alarms. And so, I would definitely be pretty diligent in making sure that I'm reducing the amount of noise that's coming from that plant, so.
And just to kind of like clarify also, the reason that I kind of modified your original request a little bit was just to kind of give them an option in case, you know, it wasn't, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and I, like I said, I'm not here, I mean, I would, I don't like running Sundays. I mean, you know, it's work-life balance, you know, I don't want my employees, you know, burnout, you know, I don't, this is, this is not something that I, just because I have those hours, if you were to prove it, doesn't mean I'm going to be running full bore, you know, for that four months or five months, or even the two months, you know, for this year. It's, it's more of, hey, listen, you know, if I've got, the other thing that you encounter in this industry is breakdowns. I can imagine that, you know, mining is a very abrasive, it's a very abrasive and very maintenance-intensive operation. You've got a lot of things that could, that you're constantly, you know, breaking down, whether it's, you know, you know, diesel motor, or washers, you know, vibrating screens, I mean, you've got a lot of, you know, rocks and heavy material that you're trying to wash, and so, I mean, any breakdown that we have just exasperates, you know, you know, especially right now, in the midst of the busiest time of the year, I mean, if we lose a day worth in production, that, that's a huge deal, you know, and that's, that's me telling customers, hey, listen, you need to wait a day for material, or you need to, you know, we're at that point where, you know, you're, you know, you're having to put customers off, you know, and, and that's, that I don't like having to do that, obviously, so.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Paul?
Paul, you have any comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Taking a nap. Hi, thank you. We appreciate it. Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing that, I bring it back to the, to the board. Any comments from you? Don't look at me like that.
I understand the need for the increased production, but I tend to go toward Mr. Hamilton's suggestion of the modified hours. I know people, there are people who go to my church who have complained about the noise and increased hours. I know I'll hear about it more.
Have we had any public comment?
Not since the notice went out, no.
Okay.
I would agree with Kathleen here to, to maybe, if we're going to do something, we utilize Mr. Hamilton's suggestion of reducing those requested hours.
And you can, I mean, and one of the things that you could do is just consider, you know, it doesn't have to be exactly like I was proposing it, you can just modify it if you want to, a little bit, give them a little bit more, or maybe, you know, I don't know how you would want to work that, so.
Maybe a question for the applicant? Is, if it's limited to what the county's suggesting, does that help us, does that give you enough?
Can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, please.
So, so based on that, because it's dredging only, and you talked about not moving material.
Yeah, so, and I don't know, you know, I don't want to sound ungrateful, you know, that's the last thing I want to do, you know, as far as like, as far as the hours, because I am grateful for you guys even, you know, considering it. You know, as far as the tons per hour, you know, currently, you know, on a good day, you know, you might be pumping 100 ton or 150 ton an hour, right? And so, you know, if, if currently we're running what the hours that Mr. Hamilton was stating, you know, I would, you know, I know originally 8:30, you know, but the 6:30, I mean, it probably is not going to make a huge difference as far as like the amount of tons. You know, I would, you know, if you're asking me like, okay, is 8:30 too late, you know, for, for, and just so you know, I actually, I actually do live, you know, off of Holmes Road, so I mean, I can, I can, when I, you know, when I go home, or when I actually am in that area, so I do know, you know, my neighbors, and I do know, you know, as far as the noise and everything, so I'm very well aware of what the impact is, you know, and I'm sensitive to that for that reason, you know, and just being, you know, a good steward of my surroundings as far as what people are, you know, concerning, and that's why I like, on Sunday, for example, I was like, okay, people, you know, Sunday morning, last thing I want to do is wake up 8 o'clock in the morning and hear a diesel motor going, you know, drinking a cup of coffee outside, or, you know, so I figured, well, let's wait until 10:00 or 10:30 on Sunday, you know, wait until people are out and not having to, you know, that's the first thing they wake up and they hearing a, you know, diesel motor running, and, and, and to the, I mean, certain days, you don't even hear that motor. I mean, depending on the weather, there's a lot of factors at play in the noise, you know, because there's times I wake up, if I, if I get out of my house and I know that the motor's running, there's times like, oh, my, am I broke down? Because I don't hear it. Right? And, and when I get to the plant, we're running, and I'm like, okay, that's weird. I, I mean, there's times where you don't, you don't necessarily hear it, depending on the wind, and depending, so it's not, I don't feel like it's, I mean, I can't speak for people that live like right on the river there, on, off of Bradway, you know, there's that subdivision right there. I'm sure they might, they might be more closer to it, they might hear it, you know, more consistently, but get back to what you're saying as far as the hours, you know, even if you were to give it to me, you know, hours to like 7:00 or 7:30 every evening, that would be, you know, that extra hour doesn't seem like a lot, but it is, as far as, if you take that times, you know, six days, or seven, you know, take that, you know, that equals out to be, you know, almost a full day's worth of production, you know, and that's kind of how I was looking at it, it was like, okay, in a matter of weeks, can I squeeze enough hours to make another day or day and a half worth of production in a, in a full week, if I can keep, add another hour and a half to my day?
Because, because looking at what staff proposes, excluding the Sunday, it gives you about another 10% capacity.
Yeah, I know, it does, yeah, it doesn't, I mean, and it doesn't really, you know, the 10%, you know, as far as like, it, I mean, I'll take whatever you guys give me, obviously, you know, but, I mean, without sounding, you know, like I said, greedy, you know, I would prefer, you know, if we could, you know, even seven, or, even if you gave me till 7:00, you know, at least that gives me at least that extra hour, and you take that times, you know, six days a week, or even on a Sunday, or a Saturday, for example, okay, so Saturday I have to shut down at 4:00, okay? So, Saturday, if, if you give me till, let's say, 7:00 o'clock, that's an extra three hours, you know, that I can pump sand. So, you got those three hours there, plus another five during the week, you know, so that's, you know, almost, almost, and, you know, and I don't know if you guys are considering giving me any Sunday hours, but at least just right there, that's another extra eight hours' worth of production time that I can, which equals out to be, you know, it would, on a good day, you're looking around 900, I mean, 1,000 ton of sand, you know, and right now, if you want to, you know, I mean, I'm selling over 1,000 ton a day right now, just, you know, with the landfill and just all the other customers, so I mean, it's, you know, it is, and the case in point is that, right now, and that's why I just made it for these two months for this year, because I know things are going to die down, I know things are going to slow down, it's not going to be, you know, it's just nice to know that if I break down and I lose five hours worth of production on a day, I'm like, man, okay, instead of like, okay, well, you know, that customer has to be pushed off, I can say, okay, maybe I can make it up with these extra hours that I can, I can pump. But, you know, like I said, it's, it's not like I'm, just if you guys grant me these hours, that I'm going to be pumping, you know, for the next, you know, four or five, you know, year, I mean, just, okay, well, April starts, you know, those are the hours, that's what I'm, that's now what I'm going to run. That's not how, that's not how, you know, I'm going to proceed with that, because like I said, I mean, you know, when you start paying overtime, you start paying, you know, DSNO or Evergy, you know, and you start paying the costs that it takes to produce that sand on an overtime basis or on extra hours, it gets to be pretty expensive. And so, it doesn't give me any really true, the only benefit I get is just to be able to supply sand to my customers and not push their projects down the road, or, and that's what usually ends up happening, because I know, you know, there's been some delays on this, on the landfill, just because, you know, I mean, they're wanting the 12,000 ton of sand, and I'm sure they would, they would rather have it, you know, all 12,000 ton in one week, and I'm like, no, that's not going to happen, because I've got, I've got to balance, I've got to balance the needs of the county, and I've got to balance the needs of the city of Salina, you know, and I can't, you know, when, when Darren with the Road and Bridge says, hey, listen, I need X amount of tons of sand, I'm like, well, I can only give you this many tons, because I've got to, I've got to think about all my other customers, and, and so, that puts, that does put a strain, you know, on a lot of different, you know, customers as far as their needs, and, and so, it's not a good position I like to be in, because, you know, I do strive on having good customer service and being able to ride material for, for everybody, you know, and so, the extra 10%, yeah, granted, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'll take it, but, I mean, I, I would prefer 7:00, 7:30 would be, I mean, if 8:30 is too late, you know, I mean, if you guys would consider maybe 7:30, I mean, that would be, you know, that would, you know, I mean, that would be beneficial to me, and, and like I said, I mean, I, I would definitely make sure that, you know, our sound is, we're not producing any more sound than we have to. And, and it would just be for that brief, for these two months, you know, if I need it, if I need it. If I don't need it, I ain't, I ain't pumping, you know, because like I said, the last thing I want to do is pump a Sunday. I mean, everybody needs a day off, I mean.
That's what I was going to ask about Sundays. Will that, are you trying to do that to build up a little reserve?
Well, so, so, if you're allowed to, if you allow me to pump till 8:30, it's about trying to spread the hours out. So, I was thinking, okay, so, I mean, I wouldn't, if you, if you said, hey, you can pump till 8:00, 8:30, I would get rid of the, it's all about, I was trying to spread what I felt like my weekly production needed to be, and spread that over, you know, the course of seven days, right? And so, that's the reason why I included Sunday, because I was trying to figure out, okay, what's, what are you guys, I mean, what are you guys going to accept, or, or be able to, you know, what's my best case, case of getting this thing approved, right? And so, yeah, Sundays, I know, that kind of, I mean, I don't, like I said, I don't, I don't really particularly want to run Sunday, but, I mean, I was trying to figure out a way of getting my hours I needed, you know, and, and like I said, and I told Tim, you know, I, I, I mean, whether, I'm flexible with the hours that you, I asked for 8:30, it is kind of like a bargaining thing, not that I'm bargaining, bargaining here, but, you know, you know, it's always best to ask for more than if you guys come back and say, no, you know, come down. back and say, no, you know, come down, and it's like, you know, it's kind of, that's how, you know, usually it works sometimes, so, but, uh, do you have any other questions?
No, I think that answered mine.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Now, my thought is, are we, other than, you know, some comments that you've received, Kathleen, I think, without a lot of input from the public in that area, I'm kind of inclined to allow at least some expansion here.
Some, some expansion I believe is needed, but I think eight thirty is too late.
What do you think about, what do you think about going?
He's asking about going to?
Seven thirty?
Going to seven or seven thirty in the evening.
Tim, Tim proposed eight.
I've proposed eight, but he's.
Well, that's dredging, yeah.
The applicant is, is, uh, uh, you know, like I say, is posing, uh, seven or seven thirty for the, uh.
I guess we need to clarify whether that's just dredging, or if that's full operation, because you got in the proposal, yeah.
Yeah, when you say, when you say full operation, are you meaning like open to the public, or are you meaning?
Well, because you're talking about dredging, is that, so you're, in that case, you're not moving material around?
No, that's right, so, so basically, what would happen with the dredging is that, you know, when, when I'm on the water, we're pumping sand, you know, no mobile equipment would be moving, is basically the plant has to run, obviously, so you'd have conveyor belts, and you'd have the washers running, but, I mean.
Wouldn't have the backup alarm?
Yes, right, yeah, you wouldn't have the, yeah, so you wouldn't have mobile equipment moving around, I'm not, I'm not stockpiling material, I'm not, it would just be a strictly production-based, um, you know, strictly production-based.
So, right now, right, I'm sorry to interrupt, but is it right now, your dredging is from five to six thirty, that's what was approved?
Oh, is it five to, okay, I did, yeah, okay.
And, uh, and so, and that's Monday through Friday, and noon to four on Saturdays with no truck traffic, um, the, and so, are you saying that the, when you get to eight thirty, are you saying eight thirty would be like the, the, you know, you're talking about going to eight thirty, that would be dredging, that would be included in the dredging hours? Now you're expanding?
Yeah, so, yeah, when, so when you're dredging, you know, um, whether you guys prove seven thirty, eight, eight thirty, you know, I mean, what, what we do now, currently, is that when we get to that approach or a cutoff, we, we take fifteen minutes before that time, and we shut down, because we know, we, we tend to, we know, we got to clear the system out, and so, it takes about fifteen minutes, by the time we, we cool the motors down, idle them down, get the, get the sand through the system, you know, we know that takes about fifteen minutes, and so, we're actually starting in the process of shutting down before we hit that timeframe, because, you know, we just know that, hey, you know, um, that's the amount of time it takes to actually really fully shut down, so we're, we would be shut down if you, you know, approve, like I said, eight, seven thirty, eight, eight thirty, I mean, if you guys are okay with eight, I'd be, I ain't going to complain if you choose eight, you know, I, but, um, but by then, that would mean by seven forty-five, or, we would already, we'd be in that process of shutting down, and by eight o'clock, there would be no more sound, and so, that's, and so, that's, that would be, that's our process of shutting down.
Because I've got down, my, what I was orig, when I was, my modification to what you were doing is dredging only from six thirty to eight.
Okay, yeah, and that's, and dredging is, yeah, so, yeah, and that would be what, what we would be doing, I mean, as far as the dredging part, I mean, when you dredge, your, your plant has to be running, your conveyor belts have to be moving, so, I mean, um, that would just be that operation, there wouldn't be, like I said, there wouldn't be any mobile equipment moving around, there, you know, I mean, is that, is that answer?
Well, I mean, what I'm trying to do is just get to, when, when you say that you're wanting to, to work to eight thirty.
Yeah.
Okay, does that include the dredging hours?
Yes, that would be, that would include the dredging hours, yes.
So, you would be cutting off at eight thirty, everything?
Yeah, by eight thirty, there'd be no sound.
Right, and so, that means, I'm just saying that, that basically dredging from six thirty to eight would be what, what I was, Monday through Friday?
Yeah, no, and I, I would prefer, those hours actually, go with his hours, those are actually more generous than what I was saying.
Seven, because I've got seven AM to six thirty PM, Monday through Friday, dredging only six thirty to eight.
Yeah, I mean, if you were to, if you were to give me those hours, you know, uh, seven to eight every day, even if you did that at Saturday, I would not have to, we could take Sunday out of it, um, and, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't run Sunday, or, I mean, I would, I think that would give me enough, that would give me enough increase in my production, I feel like, you know, I, I think I'd be able to meet everybody's needs at that point, you know, um, but yeah, by, by eight o'clock, there would be no sound, so I mean, by seven forty-five, I would already start that, de-escalating the noise, starting to wind things down, you know, because it does take a process of, of clearing the system of sand, and then by eight o'clock, you know, there'd be no sound, so.
Hey, Tim, this is Paul.
Yeah.
Hey, just for clarification sakes on my part, uh, we're currently allowing dredging between five and six thirty.
That's correct.
And all we're, all we're being requested for is from five until eight o'clock, or eight thirty, correct?
Ri- right, what I've got, yeah, uh, from six thirty to eight.
So, we're only talking about dredging, that's all we're talking about?
Yeah.
Correct, thanks.
Uh-huh. Now, just, what do the, what do the other commissioners think if we, you know, look at six thirty to eight PM for dredging, and then just do Monday through Saturday? Excluding Sundays?
I could go with that.
I think so, the applicant said that if we do that, they, he would not be open Sunday, so.
Uh, just for clarification. The current dredging is from five to six thirty.
Okay.
Currently, yeah.
Okay, so, I think there might be some, I think there might be, when, so in the morning, I, when you say five to six thirty, I think, I'm not sure where the, um, misconception is, so we actually start in the morning at seven AM, so at seven AM dredging, dredging operation is, is from seven to six thirty.
Correct.
So, so, so if we're, I just want to make, I just want to make sure that, when we're talking about that time.
So, we're just saying dredging only?
Yes, dredging only, yeah.
Only is the word that's missing in what we're.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, if we said something like seven AM to six thirty PM normal operation, six thirty to eight dredging only?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I got, yeah.
Yeah, and that's kind of how he does it, we, you're just proposing to add Saturday in.
Add Saturday to that, and then eliminate Sundays.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You guys need to go back and read the original, you guys need to go back and read the original CUP.
Yeah, because the original.
It looks specifically at item sixteen. Before you start making any motion.
I've got currently enforced hours are seven AM to five PM Monday through Friday, seven AM to noon on Saturdays, dredging from five to six thirty PM Monday through Friday, and noon to four on Saturdays with no truck traffic during dredging only hours.
Yeah, and so, what we're talking about is allowing normal operation up to six thirty, and then dredging six thirty to eight.
Dredging only.
Dredging only, yeah.
Dredging only.
Is that your understanding, Paul?
That was not my understanding, I thought we were talking about only dredging, which in that case would have been from the five o'clock hour to the eight thirty hour, original request.
The original request doesn't, yeah, the original request just says extended hours, it doesn't say anything about.
It doesn't, he doesn't mention dredging, yeah.
Okay.
I like, I like the changes that we've talked about here, with, with no Sunday in.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like, I move that we accept CUP, I'm Mario Page here.
Twenty four oh one.
Twenty four oh one, to amend the hours from seven AM to eight PM with dredging only from six thirty to eight, Monday through Saturday.
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded.
I have a question.
Okay.
This is temporary, this is for April through September.
I, I'm, good point, this is, this is actually for August through September, this year, and then April to September.
I can amend my motion, okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve CUP twenty four dash zero one to change the working hours from seven AM to six thirty PM, and dredging from six thirty PM to eight, Monday through Saturday, August and September this year, and April through September following years.
I second the addition.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
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 It's been approved a hundred percent, um, that's conditional use permit twenty four oh one.
Passed.
Yeah.
Now the party begins, uh, we're going to go into item three and the discussion of the batteries.
Okay, TXT twenty four oh one, discussion of the inclusion of provisions for battery energy storage systems under Article thirteen A, the zoning regulations, this is, uh, ba- basically a commission-initiated review of Section thirteen A dash twelve to discuss possible inclusion of language addressing commercial battery storage systems in Saline County, at, at the June twenty-fifth hearing, after a recommendation of approval of a resolution addressing solar energy facilities, the commission decided to start the discussion on the B E S S facilities, uh, this month, uh, the, I've included provisions incorporated in the Douglas County regulations, again, as, as kind of, as a starting point, because these were what were in the other resolution that I'd given you from them, and we took it, separated it out, and so, uh, between the solar and the B E S S, so this is their B E S S, uh, provisions that they had in their resolution, I just kind of did a cut and paste, and it's just for discussion, um, uh, Paul, I, I have to apologize, because I think that you had sent something to Cora Lee to, to distribute amongst the, the commissioners, and I apologize, uh, we've been kind of short-staffed, and so I, I don't know if they got it, so.
Well, that's fine, this is going to be a discussion anyway, but we will continue it based off of that information, I see.
Okay, but, uh, basically, uh, what we're looking at, I'll just kind of try to go over this as quick as I can, um, battery energy storage system, all battery energy storage systems shall comply with the requirements of the National Fire Protection Association, eight fifty-five, and all their local, state, and federal regulations, uh, battery energy storage systems, including all mechanical equipment, shall be enclosed by a fence with a self-locking gate to prevent unauthorized access, um, the area within ten feet of each side of a battery energy storage system shall be cleared of combustible vegetation and surface gravel with non-combustible surface, uh, signage for the battery energy system shall be in compliance with ANSI Z five thirty-five, and shall include, uh, the information type of, and it goes into the, uh, the type of technology associated with the battery energy storage system, and any special hazards associated with that, um, also, as required by the National Electrical Code, disconnect and other emergency management information shall be clearly displayed on a light reflective surface, uh, clearly visible warning signs, uh, and then it goes into warning sign, its spacing shall be determined with the battery energy storage plan, item four was, uh, battery storage shall not be located within five hundred feet of an existing residence, building permit plans must be submitted, uh, for the residents, uh, is, is an onsite, uh, of, for a conditional use permit approval, the operator shall demonstrate their ability to strictly conform and monitor all applicable performance standards detailed in these regulations, as well as applicable state, federal laws and regulations, the key issues, and I've kind of modified this a little bit, I said the key issues to be considered with the review of an application that's submitted, uh, include but are not limited to the visual impact, um, impact on wildlife habitat, native Florida flora and fauna, impact on cultural, historical, or archaeological features, impact on critical wildlife habitats, current state list, listed threatened and endangered species and species in need of conservation as defined by Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks, impact of environmental sensitive lands, impact of water quality and soil erosion, impact on infrastructure, including roads and bridges for construction access, aviation, uh, F, Federal Aviation Administration, FAA impacts, any cumulative impacts, uh, company experience, reputation, financial ability, decommissioning, removal, reclamation, and disposal, bond agreement, or other means of ensuring reclamation, disposal, and decommissioning performance, specific requirements for building and construction, emergency services, and training requirements, and feasibility of, of emergency response, degree to which agricultural uses and wildlife habitat are accommodated with the facility layout and design, and testing for meteorological impact, um, the re, I added that, that last part, meteorological impact because of the hail situation that we have here, as well as, um, other type of impacts, like, such as, uh, uh, collision impacts and things like that, so like, I think that, uh, one of the things that came up in the public discussion on, you know, back last year was, uh, what if someone, you know, basically, you know, accidentally stray bullet or something, uh, impacts the, the casing, uh, the other thing I put in here as well, I think I put it in, is, um, the requirement for seismic testing, I think I, I put that in there, I can't remember, but it's, uh, but seismic testing as well is something that you could look at.
Yeah, that's listed under safety, Tim.
Okay.
Part of it.
Okay, I got you, yeah, that's it, okay, it's there, um, and, uh, the, uh, pre-application outreach, bonding and financing, decommissioning, all of these things are, are things that you can consider, uh, or should be considered in this, and so, with that, I'll just kind of like turn it over to you all to kind of discuss amongst yourselves, and then get public input.
Paul, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I sent you guys some information via Cora Lee, and you'll see it when you get home and read your emails, uh, tomorrow, but, uh, there is a really good website that I think all of us need to be aware of, and the website is cleanpower.org, it goes into a lot of the, uh, claims and facts on clean energy, and I think everybody, uh, needs to take some time to go through this website, and read, and become educated on the, all of the clean energy systems, specifically the batteries, uh, does a really good job of explaining the battery system, uh, they also have, the American Clean Power is what I mean, they, they've also developed, uh, local code, uh, regulations for us to consider, and, um, I'm going to continue looking at that, and get that information provided to Tim, so that we can get something that is a third-party independent developed, so that we have something to look at, but that's cleanpower.org.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments?
Well, I also have looked at the cleanpower.org, and I agree with. I also have looked at the cleanpower.org and I agree with Paul that it's worth looking at.
I know some of the things that I've dug into a little bit too are just the types of batteries that are used in the systems. Some of them are a lot more flammable and more hazardous if they do catch fire than others. You know, the, the NMC and NCA are a lot more hazardous than the LPA, LFP.
Well, I concern the last time was that the fire departments, the fire districts were, were not really consulted at all. I mean, they were talk, I think they were sent letters, if I remember right, but.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
There was no real outreach.
Pardon me?
There was no real outreach.
Right, that, and they, they would be the ones, whether it's District one or two, or wherever the thing's located. And probably all of them need to be in, involved in some training, all six districts that we have need to be involved in the training process. And certainly, that's after the fact, before the fact, we need to get input from all of them. And, and make sure that the chiefs are here, or their designated is here, or whomever from that particular fire district is here to listen.
Those would be requirements that we could put into these regs.
Yeah.
Yeah, anything, anything like that, this, this public safety, I think, needs to be in the regs.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, to follow up with that comment, the cleanpower.org regulations, the local ordinances that they've developed for us includes that information in there.
Okay. I think that, yeah, we'll all agree that safety's gonna have to be a high priority with what we're doing. If Nellin House has anything, then we can start public comment. Anybody that'd like to come up and speak, um, please do, and, uh, we'll give you, uh, five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Build a Silvy, four nine forty-five, South Simpson Road, Gypsum. The reports you have in front of you is one with Mr. Fennel referenced. Uh, you know, it seems like I recall last time being here, I kinda got shut down by the chairman when I mentioned BES because according to them, the discussion was focused solely on solar. I made the comment then that you can't have one without the other, and here we are. It almost seems to some of us like the entire discussion of solar would provide a Trojan horse to get BES back into the conversation. Uh, we're hoping for a much better rational situation with plus power, whatever other entity may be coming in here. Because frankly, we were treated like we were a bunch of idiots just because we live in rural USA. And none of us appreciated that. Many of us are licensed and or degree professionals. We live in rural USA because we want to live here. We don't want to run the risk of some runaway technology messing that up for us. Uh, the handouts I passed out, oddly enough, uh, they were promulgated less than a week after twenty-two workers in a BES factory were immolated in an industrial accident in South Korea. What you have in front of you are minimum suggestions requirements. They are not meant to be a do-all, end-all, be-all solution. It is expected that plus power or whatever other entity may come in along with the planning commission see this as a starting point from which to build on. Certain suggestions made, for example, for siding need not be compromised, one of which is a one-mile setback from homes. What one homeowner adjoining a BES siding may find agreeable, their other neighbor may not. As such, there's no need to risk infringement on one property rights in favor of another. So that one-mile setback all around needs to stay in place. Um, the general consensus in the community is still pretty much a hard note. But none of us are technological Luddites. We know what's coming. Don't mean we have to like it. We know, we know what's eventually gonna come. But we really expect to be heard this time around and not just cast off by some people telling us what they will and want to adhere to as far as siding, safety, maintenance, et cetera. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Norin Reynolds, Salina, Kansas. Without taking this, what I've heard so far, I'm concerned about violation of airspace and not by aircraft. At any time during the construction or operation of this facility, will there be a violation of airspace? This is happening in other states.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak this evening?
Hi.
Hi.
Teresa Swisher, forty-eight fifty-three, East McReynolds Road. Uh, I know that plus power is in the wings. Um, September is when they can re, redo their CUP or whatever they, they need to do. My question to you guys is, if we don't have this resolution, this ordinance, regulation, whatever it's gonna be called, completed by September, when they come back onboard, are we going to hold them back until we get this done? Or are we going to allow them to go in and, under the, the wire, like?
Most likely be, as, as long as it is not addressed in our regulations currently and they try to submit a, an application, it won't be heard unless it's addressed in our regulations. So, once we get it addressed in the regulations, and however long that takes.
Okay, so as long as we're in the process.
Yes.
It will, they will not be.
Right.
Approved.
Right.
In the middle of all this.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? I see none. I bring it back to the board. Do we have any further discussion?
Got a lot of work and a lot of studying to do.
Yeah, and just.
I'm by no means an expert myself. I don't, I put myself out there like I am, but.
And I, I'm gonna, uh, just kinda throw it out there that if you see anything that you think that the rest of the board would wanna see, if any one of you sees anything, just forward it to me and I'll forward it on and include it in the, in the packets for the next time, so.
Okay. All right.
And I'll repeat what I've repeated in the past. One of my mantras for my signature block was, I don't want a decision. I want an informed decision. And I would greatly appreciate it if y'all would take the time to do some research and to look at that webpage and start there and look at the information that's available there to understand battery storage facilities. So that we can move on this one a little bit quicker than what we did before. There are some really good guidelines already developed, and I don't think we need to recreate something that's already been nationally reviewed, independently reviewed.
Thank you, Paul. I think we all agree with you.
Yep.
I, I, uh, would entertain a motion.
And you can mo- make a motion to table?
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you want, or continue, to continue, to continue, until next month, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this discussion on utility-scale battery energy systems until next month?
I second that.
Oh, we got two seconds, so we're doing real good. Uh, uh, then the motion is that we would, uh, continue TXT twenty-four dash zero one until next month, where we can continue with what, uh, staff has for us and any other research that we can all bring to the table. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, we're unanimous. That's done.
And, uh, let you know next month, uh, the, the hearing's gonna be on, uh, August twenty-seventh. And we do have one, uh, pending conditional use permit, another one, uh, to be heard. Um, and so, um, and then we'll have that case, kinda similar to what we had tonight, so.
Okay. All right.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right. We're done tonight. Thank you very much.